Hello everyone and welcome to today's session of Coffee and Counseling where we don't spill the tea, but the coffee will be piping hot, where we talk about all things counseling. We're your hosts Rachel Steinhardt.
And Stephanie Van Sheik. Today, as we sit down to record, we do so with heavy hearts. It is September 11th, marking 24 years since the attacks that shook the United States as well as the world. And in this moment, we're also grappling with the weight of more recent tragedies. Just yesterday, political influencer Charlie Kirk, known for encouraging open debate, was assassinated. At the same time, social media has been circulating graphic images of the tragic death of Irina Zerutka, a young Ukrainian refugee who was brutally stabbed on a train in North Carolina.
And unfortunately, we have witnessed a horrific terrorist attack in Jerusalem on a bus this past Monday, and multiple soldier deaths throughout Israel. And it's just been a very heavy and difficult week, full of grief and full of loss.
Hi, everyone. This is Stephanie again. Right after we wrapped up recording this session, we also learned not just one, but at least two school shootings that took place over the last week. Rachel and I want to pause to recognize the gravity of that reality, to hold space for the victims, their families, and the communities impacted, and to acknowledge how deeply these tragedies add to the collective grief we're all carrying right now.
We didn't feel that it was right to have a regular episode today without acknowledging what is happening in the world, without acknowledging the deaths, without acknowledging all the families from this past week, from September 11th, who have lost their loved ones. Our prayers and our thoughts and our condolences go out to all the terrorist victims in Israel, the soldiers' families, to Charlie Kirk's wife and children, mother, father, siblings. It's so heartbreaking. And Steph and I really wanted to dedicate this episode to all these lost lives, to their families, and hopefully be able to open a conversation about what's been going on with the violence on social media, what's been going on with our inability as a nation to hear each other out, with the scary reality that the value of human life is slipping through our fingers, having an open conversation about the fact that we need to learn how to agree to disagree. We need to learn that freedom of speech means being able to speak and hating what the other person is saying, and learning to just walk away. We cannot be hurting people and killing people because we don't agree with their thought process, regardless of your religion, your race, your politics, your belief system. There has to be a world where we can live in peace and not always agree with each other. We have to live in a world where we can have open dialogues about what we think and hear what the other person has to say. And in terms of Charlie, that's exactly what he stood for. He tried to truly create, time and time again, in so many different spaces, an open opportunity in what he thought was safe environments for people to come forward who had completely opposing thoughts and beliefs from his own, from different walks of life, and different cultures, and different sexual orientations and races. And it didn't matter if he agreed with them or not. He gave them the space to ask, to debate, to disagree. And we need to learn that that's a wonderful thing. We all need to be able to hear each other out. It's the only way that we are going to grow as a people, as a nation, as human beings. We need to hear each other out and to create the space to disagree. And the fact that we are so openly and easily turning to violence and then openly sharing that violence. Some people are celebrating this violence. It's not okay, you guys. It's not okay. And Stephanie and I really debated back and forth on whether we should even record today because it's such a hard day for both of us. We're really coming into this episode with an immense amount of grief in our hearts. You know, the fact that there was such an open terrorist attack that I was so convinced was from a different year because I couldn't believe this was happening again. The level of death tolls and violence and murders and terrorism happening in the world today, it needs to stop. It needs to stop being celebrated. We need to stop egging each other on. I don't know about you listeners, but this is not the world that I want to live in. I don't think this is the world that Steph wants to live in. And we really hope that, first of all, we can dedicate today's episode to all of these lost lives and also to hopefully bringing in some light and talking about the serious effects of what's going on and why we need to be navigating our thoughts and behaviors and activity around what's going on differently than we are right now.
I couldn't say that in a better way. And thank you, Rachel, for really putting all of that out there. And we're really hoping that this can be a session where there's more unity at the end, regardless of what our belief systems are, like you said, political beliefs, races, gender, whatever it is. We need to be able to see people as people at the end of the day, even if we don't like what they have to say or whatever the situation might be. And part of the reason why we also want to record this is talking about how social media has really maybe contributed greatly to this, but also on the backend, how horrible things spread so quickly and how it was so easily accessible to find out everything that's happened and seeing some really disturbing visuals. I know for myself, specifically yesterday, when I found out everything that was going on with Charlie Kirk and praying when I did find out that there was a miracle that somehow he would survive because he is, I mean, obviously he's a person and has a wife and two young kids and very publicly known. And those kids now no longer will have their father that they love so much. So that is, that's really heavy on our hearts. But I went on X to try to learn about the most quick to date, up-to-date information because they're usually the quicker ones to be updating. And I did see a video, if you don't, if you aren't aware, which I'm sure everyone is at this point, of Charlie Kirk. He was at a campus doing open debates as he normally does. And I saw a video from the distance, from a distance of him getting shot. And that was disturbing in and of itself. So I knew that I didn't want to see anything more. And I tried to distract myself a little bit. I was looking at something different. And I'm not normally on X, but I'm, so I'm not too, too familiar with it. I only go on when there's something really newsworthy and like we need to know up to the minute, like what's going on. So I found out that it kind of just goes through the feed for you. So it goes right to the next video. And before I knew it, I was watching a really disturbing up close video as to what happened. And that really stuck with me. Obviously, it's not about me, but I just think about all the people. And I know so many people who have either willingly or accidentally seen this video and regret it. And if you haven't, I know curiosity is going to be piquing for you. I really would recommend against trying to look up what happened because it's so disturbing. And I think it can lead to desensitization, which we're going to talk about, but also traumatization. There is like a mass, I believe, a mass trauma happening with everything that's going on in the world and everything that we're able to see in the world. Because even a few decades ago, we wouldn't have, everything would be a little bit more censored and maybe making it a little easier for people to take things in as opposed to everything coming out uncensored and everything all at once, trying to get through the, cut through the mess and all of that. And I know that the events that have happened has reverberated throughout the world. There are people in different parts of the world who are saying that they feel it too, that there's a lot, there's just a lot going on and a lot of really heavy, heavy things going on. So I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience and how I've been thinking about how other people might be experiencing this as well.
Yes, it's, it's quite a lot. So we're going to talk about some of the effects of what's going on and the way that social media is sharing these videos, these images, this news in the way that it is. 20 years ago, watching a video of someone being killed would have really left you shaken and traumatized for a really long time. And now it's something that you could just easily stumble upon between a dance video and a cooking tutorial. And that normalization, it's not just about like getting used to it. It's that we're, we're getting a normalization of horror. And it's so unhealthy. Our nervous systems literally adapt to that. And the more we're exposed to violent footage, the less shocking it becomes. That's desensitization, but the cost is humongous. When horror no longer horrifies us, we lose part of our capacity to feel and respond with compassion. We lose our ability to think, you know, this is bad. This is not normal. I remember when we were younger and it was, I don't know if this is still such a thing now, but the big thing when we were younger was keeping young kids, trying to kind of shelter them from a lot of video games because a lot of video games were coming out. And it was the first really violent thing that children were exposed to. And we were so, at least in the circles I was in, we were so sensitive to children and teens being exposed to these violent games. And it's so disturbing to me that now you can go online and look up a song and without even knowing, you know, we talked, we can talk about the, you know, inappropriate things that come up. But now it's also violent things that come up where without even wanting to, you can see detailed things of a terrorist attack, of a murder, of someone getting beaten up. I know that this conversation really came up in the Jewish space a lot when October 7th first happened because unfortunately Hamas was, was live streaming them murdering the Jewish people like by the minute and by the second. They were literally live streaming them committing murders and we couldn't look away. And then it was recorded forever. And a lot of people wish that they could unsee it because it caused severe trauma. And since that day, you know, on smaller scales, and when I say smaller scales, it's still horrible, but just in terms of level of violence, you know, sharing families screaming at hearing their, you know, their children, soldiers, family members being killed by rockets, soldiers being killed. You know, when we think about today's September 11th, can we imagine if we lived in today's world on September 11th and they were live streaming or sending videos circulating of people jumping from those towers or, you know, images of people suffocating, people stuck and trapped in a, these are not things that we benefit from seeing. I mean, at the end of the day, we can't unsee something. This is something I tell teens a lot, especially, you know, I guess in the world, this was a lot more relevant when I was younger, but you know, when we were going into that age where PG-13 was like a whole new world of movie. And I remember telling, I used to like do mentorship for teens and I would tell them, you know, guys, this comes with responsibility because once you see something, whether you like it or not, it will impact you and you can't unsee something. And that doesn't change for adulthood. It doesn't change in adults. Like at the end of the day, you have to think about like what impact is this going to have on my physical wellbeing, on my spiritual wellbeing, on my mental health? Do you need to see these videos or images? It doesn't make you grieve more. It doesn't make you a better person. It doesn't help you understand what happened more. It shouldn't be something that's entertaining to you. If that's something that's entertaining to you, please go get help. You know, why, why are we turning these horrific, horrific moments, these worst moments of a human being's life into clickbait? It's not okay. It's not okay.
Yeah. And I just want to take a moment here as well to address that we do have, we're curious beings and we do have this natural inclination that if we pass a car wreck, we're normally rubbernecking it and looking at it. And we can differentiate finding this entertaining versus perhaps dark curiosity, which I think we all have to some extent. So if you are finding yourself very curious, that doesn't mean there's something wrong with you or anything like that. It just means that we are humans and unfortunately now it's really as though if you haven't seen something, you're out of the loop and it can feel really, really rough. And I think it's so impactful that you were bringing up September 11th. Rachel, I was thinking of that as well. I remember. And I think most of us who were alive remember September 11th very, very vividly and what our experiences were, how things were happening. And I remember, I was young, I was in elementary school, the footage I would just play over and over on the TV of the first tower collapsing and people jumping out. And there's just a lot going on and I don't want to rehash it. But I know those images have stuck with me and those were probably the least impactful that it could be. If it was right now, the imagining the people who would be maybe live streaming when they were trying to figure out what do they do, making that some really primitive decisions because they didn't have another choice. I mean, the terrorists, we saw so many images that day and prior and after that, like not protests, I guess rallies about saying, shouting death to America and all these horrible things. And that sticks with us. But now it would be unimaginable how that might happen and also how it can be really easily causing radicalization of people and which then creates where people are not seeing other people as people. And if you disagree, then all of a sudden we are, we are mortal enemies. That shouldn't be the case. And I think that social media really creates a breeding ground for that. And it's part of the algorithm that there's studies that have been done that when you are looking through and scrolling through videos or whatever it is on social media, you might see a really cute and funny cat video and spend five seconds on it and get a little bit of a chuckle. Then you scroll to the next video and it could be something absolutely horrific like violence or something. And you're going to spend more time on that, which is what social media companies want. So being that our, for whatever reason, we are inclined to stay on those videos more. And then we go into what's called doom scrolling, which is like, oh my gosh, I want to learn more about that. I'm so curious that maybe it's a morbid curiosity as to what is, like what else is out there? What else is happening that I'm not aware of? And again, that in and of itself doesn't make you a bad person. I really want to reiterate that. I think we all have gotten stuck in these doom spirals, but, and it can become compulsive. And this also like rewires our brains. Our brains are like, it's neuroplasticity. It's the idea of our neuropsychology where neurons are able to develop. And I'm not trying to get all nerdy and scientific here, but the wiring of our brain through neurons and those neural connections can be rewired to really have some psychological impact on that. And we crave then more material. And oftentimes we crave an escalation in the material that we're seeing. So it's not just something that maybe it's like, okay, this is not, this is unsettling. It's getting to the point where we are much more, we have more access and less sensitization to seeing some really horrific things that are changing our brain chemistry and changing our mental health and the way that we see people and how society is operating.
Yeah. And I appreciate you making that clarification, Steph. I think you said that so beautifully. Like when I was saying, you know, if you're finding this entertaining, get help. What I mean is if you're somebody that enjoys watching in real life, you know, you're not watching like an action film, you're watching real human beings, you know, from real footage be hurt and somehow that brings you joy, that is really not healthy. Like you really should go talk to somebody if that's something that you feel like resonates with you. But yes, there's a huge difference between that and saying, I want to know what happened. Or like, you know, when you drive by a car accident and you don't want to see, but you can't look away and everyone ends up slowing down their cars because you're just like, what, what just happened? That's not what I'm talking about. And I appreciate you clarifying that, Stephanie. Please like bear with us. We're really talking, I think, from an emotional place. And so I feel like it's not the most eloquent all the time, but it is raw and real. And we've promised that that's what this podcast was going to be. And this is definitely a more raw and real conversation. So on that note, you know, we're talking about how unhealthy all of this can be mentally. And I really want to dive into that for a moment. So a lot of this can also create secondary or what we would call vicarious trauma, which we've talked about in our, you know, trauma episode. Watching violent footage is a form that can really create vicarious trauma. So even if it didn't happen to us specifically, it can trigger a trauma response. Nightmares, flashbacks, hypervigilance, different levels of fear, panic. Some people can even develop PTSD symptoms just from witnessing something traumatic secondhand. I know I said to Stephanie, from everything that I have seen and heard this past week, I myself was having nightmares last night. It's a lot. It's a lot for the brain to take in. It's a lot of information. It's a lot of horrific things that a person shouldn't have to live through. And I was driving with my kids this morning and I was thinking to myself, every single day that the world turns around, there is horrible things that happen in the world. Horrible. Every single day. And if we were aware of every single thing that happened every single day, I don't think anyone would be able to function. And that's where honestly ignorance a little bit is bliss, that we don't need to know every single horrible thing that happens all over the world every day. A, because there's very little that we can do to rearrange the whole planet. And second of all, because it's just causing more harm. Like, I mean, I don't even know what good would really come out of that unless you're somebody who's actively in a specific field that's causing change in that area. But unless that is pertaining to you, it's really just causing damage. So, you know, keeping that in mind, you're creating an endless amount of anxiety and fear, constant exposure. It really convinces our brains that the world is always dangerous and always horrible and removing humanity from humans and thinking that, you know, everyone's just like bad and justice has left the world and we are scanning for threats all over the place. And, you know, panic attacks and paranoia and social withdrawal, it can really follow. I know that for me, one of the last times that I was in Israel, there was a different war going on. And it was very scary. I remember just like we would see a lot of what we're seeing now and they would tell you, you know, every time that you're standing at a bus stop, make sure that your back is against something so someone doesn't come and stab you in the back, literally. And it was a very, I was like scared to like walk. And that's there. And, you know, there's a level of that, that if somebody's living in a war zone, that's the reality. And there is a level of that that does not need to be a person's reality. You know, we don't need to be walking around, I hope, scared that we're going to get shot every single second, living in the States. Like that's just, it's, it's just creating such a level of, first of all, almost partially making this our new norm. And second of all, allowing our bodies to live in a fear response constantly, which is so unhealthy physically and mentally. And then, you know, we can respond to, and I know a lot of people have experienced this, especially being exposed to what's going on in Israel because it's been such a long time. Some people are experiencing numbness and dissociation. Some people have experienced that even to, you know, what happened with Charlie or what happened, you know, with Irina on the bus. Like it's, it's so horrific to see innocent people just be killed for, for no reason. And at the end of the day, it's some people's reaction to that, and there's no right or wrong here, is numbness and dissociation. You know, many people cope by just shutting down emotionally, then they scroll past brutality like it's nothing because feeling, feeling it would just be too much and too overwhelming. And the numbness doesn't just apply to violence. It can bleed into daily life and relationships and really our ability to connect. Sometimes that numbness is not temporary and that can become a really scary thing. A lot of these images and graphic videos, it can create depression and helplessness. When you see an atrocity and you see an atrocity after an atrocity after an atrocity, you really start to believe that the world is just broken beyond repair. And not in a way that's fueling a fire in you to make it better. It's more in a way where you're fueling a fire to make you feel completely helpless and hopeless. And it feeds into depression and empathy and despair and, excuse me, apathy and despair. And it's, it's just not something that's creating a thought process of building or healing or making it better. It's just destruction and pain and, you know, going into this like deep depths of dark black hole. It's, it's not a positive thing. It's not helpful. And one of the, one of the most scary things is really creating desensitization in children and teens. So for younger generations, growing up online, this is a new space for, especially like with millennials. We didn't have even, even us this much access when we were kids. I mean, the baseline for children today, the exposure of violence is already so sky high. And technology is just exposing us to more and more and more by the minute. It's really scary to think, where are we going with this and where are we going to end up? Studies really show that it can lead to increased in levels of aggression and reduced empathy and distorted views of what's considered normal or entertaining. You know, I've worked with clients and Steph, I don't know if you've had this, where like younger adults or teens are finding that they are, and you know, trigger warning because this is honestly so disturbing, but they're like unable to create intimacy within relationships without violence. And I'm like, that is so not okay. You know, and I'm, I'm sorry, not sorry if that, somebody is looking at that and going, I don't get it. What's the issue with that? But no, no, like that should not be like the going norm that you feel that significant violence needs to be something that makes you feel vulnerable or open or intimate or romantic or whatever. That it's just, it's not a healthy way of going about life. And more importantly, that's not coming from a healthy space.
Yeah. And, you know, with that being said, the, the exposure that I think everyone is having, it can also really just make you feel, like Rachel said, that there's no good in the world. And I do want to share a little bit of hope with you because right now we are exposed and we never had this level of exposure before and it gets worse and worse every day to every horrific thing happening in the world. But you're really not getting the news of someone helping an old lady cross the street or the people who are just doing such wonderful things and on the most like micro level. It could just be a neighbor doing something kind or a smile. There is so much good in the world as well. And I really hope that you can try to even take this, the heaviness of this episode and maybe trying to look for the good in other people, even and especially the people who you might disagree with in some ways. Because that we need to get back to, reminding ourselves that we're all human. Most of us are doing the best that we can with the information that we have. Most of us don't come from a place of wanting to hurt other people, in my opinion. And I think that's a fair thing to say, but I think we're getting really obviously desensitized. And this is what a lot of our session today is about. And when we are talking about all this, there is a human cost. When I saw the video yesterday, the one that I really wish I didn't see, it was graphic and traumatizing to me, but at the, also at the same time, and I'm sure also anyone who's seen it, but at the same time, that was the end of his life. And everyone in the world was able to see that. And how we might find it, like we could talk about it, we can have all these different ideas and thoughts about what happened, but that is a man's life and we saw it being taken away in real time. His family is going to have to live with that, those images that are going to be circulating around. And God, I hope that God is protecting those children and I know he is, but that they will never, ever have to see that image because that is always going to be out there. His wife, I hope they never have to. With that being said, Irina, that video is out there and the lack of dignity that those, those poor human souls had to endure. that those, those poor human souls had to endure on top of their life being taken, their their humanity being stripped away. Now it's on parade for the world to see. And I think that's a really horrific thing.
I keep thinking about the viral image of Irina, like her last like face facial picture before her body, I guess, gave in because she was on such an adrenaline rush, like that look of fear in her eyes when she turned to see what just happened. And that's the last image that the whole world has of her. And these aren't even things that people, these are such the fact that these things are being made public is so not okay. And it's just the fact that the families, I I mean, I don't know what Irina's family dynamics are, but this is an innocent young girl that was just trying to start her life, just trying to make some money and escape what she came from and make something better for herself. And you know, Charlie, he was just trying to speak his own truth and his opinion and create open dialogue. And these are real people with real thoughts and real feelings and real what would have been futures and families who love them. And we just have no right to be turning these moments, these horrible moments or any moments of someone else's life into viral footage. We have no right.
These are truly acts of terrorism. And with that, we need to be really mindful about not turning that into trending content. I know our first, our first thoughts is getting it on social media and sharing and and I think that in some way it is, there's some root of that where it's like connection. And I think that all of us getting online and talking about it in respectful ways and talking, because I I I know a lot of people, I know myself, increased anxiety that's going on. So there is that form of connection that we're all sharing something really, really horrific. And I think that there is something good about that. However, um, it's something that we also have to be very, very mindful of for so many other reasons that we've already talked about, the desensitization, the the stripping of humanity and dignity from the peoples who's the subject of these videos. Uh, and the like just looking for the next trend and like, oh, I could get this video out sooner because I have it. We really have to be mindful of the culture and society that we're contributing to in that.
Yeah. And also there is a, I wanna be very clear in case anyone is taking this the wrong way. We're not talking about spreading the word and sharing information and, you know, um, keeping updated on the news. Like we're, we have the right to know what's going on in the world. And obviously there's nothing wrong with talking about that and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, first of all, even if you're gonna speak in very u- utilizing very graphic wording, there should definitely be like a trigger warning or like ask yourself why that part of it is super necessary. It might be if it's not, like maybe don't use it. But we're really talking about imagery and geography and things like that.
Thank you for clarifying that, absolutely.
Yeah, just in case anyone wasn't sure what we're talking about, because you know, us ourselves, we were, you know, posting about you know, the lost lives and what's been going on and I don't think there's something wrong with wanting to honor someone's life or say that you send condolences or try to shed light to issues that you find wrong. And you know, you have the right to speak up, I guess, is my point. It's just that we're saying it's not helpful or healthy to yourself or to others or to the people who are the victims in these situations to be, you know, sharing these visuals. It's just not right. But um you know, to that, we we really are are trying to protect our sanity, our mental health, protect our minds, really. It's to give you guys some tough love, like you have to take responsibility for your mental health online. Unfortunately, this podcast is not gonna get to the whole world. I wish that it did, but it's not going to. And some people that it is gonna get to might hear this and be like, huh, thank you. I'm gonna continue doing what I'm gonna do. So you really need to be, and and it's hard. Don't get me wrong. It's hard. It's tempting. I'll I'll say it right now. It's very tempting when you know that you can see instead of just read something that happened and it almost feels like you're watching a movie. But you have to really hold yourself accountable and making sure that you are not exposing yourself to these things that can really be harming, harming your heart, harming your mind. Pause before you're about to watch something. Ask yourself if this is necessary to watch. Not every video is worth your peace of mind. Don't share violent content, uh, unless there is a very specific purpose. Unless there's something that you think good is gonna come out of it. And I'm not here to judge where or when that would be. I'm just telling you intent. Have intention. We say this all the time, intention, intention. Keep in mind, like, what is your intention behind sharing this? You know, every time we share something, we're fueling a fire and you have to ask yourself if this is a fire you wanna spread. You know, curate whatever you're, whatever you're sending, whatever you're creating, whatever you're sharing. Try to make it something that is gonna inspire and educate, uplift. And if it's, if you need to be sharing difficult information, just ask yourself what's the best way in which to go about it. Set limits for yourself. Give, give your nervous system a break from endless scrolls. If 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 it's been a a hard week, a hard day, maybe I'm kind of speaking to myself right now. Remove yourself from your phone for a little bit. Your, your brain's gonna thank you. Your mental and spiritual sanity are gonna thank you. You know, talk about it with friends. I know Steph and I, before we started recording, jumped on here and literally just talked to each other about what's been going on for like thirty minutes. It, you need it. We need to connect to each other and not just through a screen. You know, we need to talk to family, friends or support systems, call video, like connect to people, not just through social media. And if you're disturbed by something that you saw online, don't bury it, process it, go to therapy, do a journal, talk to your loved ones.
Violence should never be entertainment. It should shock us, move us and call us to empathy. Social media unfortunately is numbing us out and turning human suffering into clickbait. And our mental health is paying the price and also people are paying the price of their lives. If we don't resist this this desensitization, we risk losing not just our peace of mind, but also, and not to sound dramatic, but I I really believe this, our humanity itself. Rachel and I both have been praying and will continue to pray for everyone who is a victim of uh, violent acts, the victims, families of nine eleven who are still impacted twenty-four years later. All the, the Jewish people and people in that area who have been victims of war, uh, victims of violence, Irina and her soul and her family, Charlie Kirk and his family. And we are hoping that anyone who believes in prayers, that you will also join us with this. And also for anyone who just wants to air out what their thoughts and feelings are, feel free to share it with us. You can share it over on our Instagram. You can email it if you just wanna get it out. Um, uh, we hope that this can open and foster a a sense of community and hopefulness as well, um, and connection. And please just make sure that you're respectful and we are not, we we are here for each other. And it's not, um, not something that has to be violent in and of itself or just a bunch of disagreements in ways that are disrespectful. So we just hope that everyone can remain respectful in that. And if you have ways that you are really working on taking care of yourself right now, please share it uh so that everyone else might be able to get some ideas or be able to find helpful tips to help them through such a horrific time. And if you know someone who can benefit from hearing this session, please share it with them. And we appreciate you joining us for such a heavy session. We hope you take care of yourself from here. And um, yeah, I guess there's not really much else to say there.
No, just, um, everyone value your own peace of mind and protect it. You deserve your peace and you deserve your sanity and protect it at all costs. You know, go take a walk today, separate yourself from your phone, do a form of self-care. Reach out, because moments like these can feel really isolating, can feel really dark and and scary. And just know that you're not alone. We send our love to everybody today and we hope that this episode leaves everyone feeling a little bit of hope and peace and unity. And we hope that next week we are reporting from a better time and space.
Take care, everyone.